Couple of probably months back, we launched these two things. One is the cyber risk quantification as initiative and we also launched the FAIR chapter. So FAIR is the institution which makes this model and we'll come across that in this session, basically what that means basically. And we also want to make sure that how science and mathematics can help us manage this, but to just walk us through all that, both of them, one which have background of CISO and somebody which is founding member of the FAIR Institute and also building solutions on top of the CRQ basically, right?
I would like to start with Rahul you first, right? So why we need to revisit? Because we had been, all of us in cybersecurity has been doing the risk assessment, right? And why we need to revisit new methods to do the risk assessment? And we are not now talking about assessment, we are talking about quantification. So why does these terms are becoming very significant terms in this enterprise?
Right sir. So thank you so much guys for staying and I know it's a long day, so we'll make sure we'll conclude on time. Cyber risk quantification, you know, when it comes to quantifying anything, you know, there's a saying you cannot, you cannot protect something which you cannot measure. And on the other hand side, for every security professional, it can be CISO, it can be CIU and especially the security practitioners. Every year they get a budget and after getting the budget, whenever you want to go to see your CFO and CEO and ask for a budget, the first question comes to you is, what this control which you are buying will add an security to my organization? So for example, if you are getting an EDR into the organization, what value add it will give me? Now, this question can come from a technical team member or non-technical team member. Now think about a model which can, which can basically objectively will help you to mathematically calculate that and showcase that to the management, that after, if you give me $300,000 for an EDR implementation in a bank, this will reduce at least $6 million of risk after investing this much of money. Now that makes a different level of conversation. Traditionally, the compliances and our VAP team, nothing bad about that, but they are very tactical in nature, especially for the senior leadership, when they convey that into the board members. You cannot go with the vulnerability database and say that this CVVA is of 10, that's why we need to protect it by having this control and all. This is not going to work with, especially with the board members. They want to understand something which, in a business language. So the model which can help you to convert risk into a, into something which you can measure, which can be likelihood. For example, the probability of your bank to be hacked is 65% for example. Now that's a quantitative way of looking at the thing. And similar way, if I ask everyone, what is your battery status right now? Anyone, you can look at your mobile and you can say Rahul, it's 10%, 20%. We can quantify that very easily. But if I ask you, how secure is your phone right now? There is no methodology which can tell you that. You can say, I have an antivirus, I have this security solution, that security solution. This is the fundamental problem which FAIR solves. It quantify the risk for you, not for your internal consumption, but for the regulator body also. So today, if there is a breach happen, you, how you will be able to tell them that what exactly you did to ensure that this will not happen? Though this was coming from China and I was not able to protect it if a national state-sponsored attack is there, but in my capacity. Last year, my cyber risk was 110 million dollar. With my team and the limited budget, I was able to reduce it to 45 million dollar. Now how I was able to do that? If mathematically objectively, you will be able to convey that to the regulator, then I think that the best thing you could have done with respect to your job profile which is there. So FAIR will not only help you to calculate the things in an objective manner from a likelihood point of view, but also it will convert the likelihood into a dollar value risk also, which board will understand. And the good part is that this is an open standard, which can be used by anyone. As a cybersecurity company, we are using it. In US, there are a lot of companies who are using it. There are some companies who are known cybersecurity companies, can be bank, can be insurance brokers, they are using this model. And just to give you a small example, a very different use case, so Netflix, I'm sure everyone is using it, everyone is using Netflix subscription. Netflix is using FAIR to predict what is the probability of any new season or a movie or a documentary? What is the probability of that thing to be leaked in the public domain because of, you know, piracy before they want to release it? So FAIR is also helping to calculate that risk also. So mainly it's the financial risk and the operational risk which will, which can be converted into dollar value, which you can implement with respect to the perspective we have. So this is FAIR, which is way too different from the traditional compliance, but it helps you to objectify the things which you will be doing at the ground level.
So Gautamam, so one is the simplification, right? Because if you're as a CISO talking to your management, you need to convey that simplified way. And the second part is the business language. And third, which is very important as well, decomposition, right? For example, there is something which been discussed and something you are putting together for management consumption, but the moment they ask a specific thing, so going to that specific is also very important basically. So this remains a challenge, right? One is to talking to the language or making it simple to them for to understand. Second part is articulating a business side and third part is, moment they ask a detailed question, you should be able to get it to the detail basically. So this had been a challenge for any CISO which are in the business of managing risks basically, right? So how do you see in last five, 16 years of time basically, this articulation and commitment coming to your articulation from the board is changing? And we'll definitely talk about this FAIR methodology for that, but before FAIR for that matter, how it was basically?
Right. Hey, good evening everyone. Thank you all for joining for this meeting. Actually speaking, it's been a great journey because we have been, when I talk about risk, we have been following ISO 31000 or ISO 271001, that's been the great methodology. We'd be using a Excel based sheet, capturing all this risk, what is that in our organization and then going line by line item and then explaining them. And one particular time, during the presentation, the risk, instead of covering the risk, you'll be more talking about a technology and buying the technology and getting more, more budgets than talking about the risk, right? But then rather over here, in the FAIR methodology, what I have seen is, what, as he said, simplification was very, very important. Seeing is what believing for every other CISOs or for every other top management stakeholders. When you see a score, right? That gets the attention of the top holders, at least the stakeholders. Then what's more about the score? When you translate the score to a business value, when I see a business value, it talks about a financial impact. When you say you'll be getting a loss of 2 million, right? That was not visible in the earlier methodology where we were able to show this Excel sheet. Now when you visibly show them that 2 billion will be a loss for you, we really grab their attention. Then probably they are going to ask you, okay, what in case if I'm going to give you 2 million, what will you do it? And that comes very, very important. FAIR gives lot more visibility on what each and every control I need to, you're going to be implementing it. That is something which is important because when I talk about controls, see, every other CISOs in this planet, right? They have got enough tools, enough controls, right? But then they are really, would like to be knowing where it can fail or how, where I'm really failing it because we have got implemented all those controls, where it is not performing well. That is something which is FAIR brings your visibility, right? For every other CISOs. But with respect to top management, I could say, once after they see the visibility from a business value, that is getting translated, it is just straight in front of them and saying that whether you go ahead and give budget for us to go and implement it, if not, transfer the risk to someone else, second of cyber insurance, where we can be going and getting a cyber insurance and do it. If you're not going to do this, then accept the fact and move on, right? But then I think mostly we will be getting a budget from the top management and how do you go ahead and really present it to some kind of cyber insurance, that's something which is important because...
We will come to insurance, but on this getting budget, right? So this number that you talk about, right? It's a high level number, right? But there are a lot of interdependencies, lot of application, lot of those things that you do, lot of interdependencies on third parties as well, right? And then there is a risk number that we come to and then there is always negotiation, right? Means for that matter, if you are asking 1 million and management says 100K only. So can you calibrate, if that 100K productively can invested in this one and this could bring, because what I'm saying, the equation is so complex, there are so many things that you do in organization. So how do you make sure that it jures down to that actual problem that you are solving and because of that, it drills up or rolls up basically that this is the risk that you are at the end of handling?
Right. In FAIR methodology, what I have seen or what we have implemented in our organization is, it goes by critical units. It's not stays at the enterprise level. You can, you can bring it down to even to critical units as well. Say for example, there is a critical unit which generates lot more revenue for you. For that unit, for example, if you want to do a ransomware protection or you want to know what's the scenario that I have got for, for that particular unit, you can very well go ahead and articulate that scenario. You can clearly articulate and say, for this, this is the implementation or this is the amount of budget that we have invested and what's the control which is all failing or which is all performing? That's something which is important.
Yeah. So Rahul, on this model, is there is only one model or there are various different type of model for different use cases basically? So can you talk about some of the use cases and is there a one universal model or there are some manifestation of those models also evolving?
So I think FAIR have done a great job and by the way, just to give you a magnitude of FAIR, you know, we are talking about FAIR, maybe you can visit FAIRinstitute.com and on DSCI website, you will be able to see that soon also. I'm sure you heard about a country known as Jordan. Now, Jordan has adapted FAIR as their country's cybersecurity methodology, standard, entire country, be it their OT security, be it their critical infrastructure, their banking, whatever. Because the beauty of the model is that it can be implemented everywhere now. Now what FAIR has done is from standardizing certain controls, models, the basic model, the predictability of a breach and the financial model, they have divided some other models also which are also in public domain. You'll be able to find the research papers and with your team, you can implement by your own. First model is known as control analytical model, that is FAIR CAM. Now that's a very interesting thing I want you to, I want you to understand. I'm sure in your organization, there can be maybe 10 to 15 controls. But if I ask you a question, can you tell me in the last one year, what are the controls which are working very well for you, which you can quantify objectively? That yes, after implementing this tool, after one year, this is the best return on security investment this control has given back to me. Now this was the question which was in gray area, usually it is in subjective, based on the findings, based on the protections, based on the logs, whatever. So FAIR CAM, what they have done is, they have converted every control with an measurement model on it, which will, which will basically take care of three things on every control. Usually it takes care of 65 controls basically, that's a standard 65 controls. Some companies can have 30, some companies have 40. So what CAM do is, they will say that, okay, you have this control, I will measure three things in that control. First, the coverage of that control. For example, you're having an EDR, if that EDR is only having a coverage of 10% of your total assets and the full year you are saying, okay, we have an EDR, we are protected, now that's a huge wastage of money, right? Because still 90% of your assets are without an EDR. Second thing is the capability. Again, example, now I'm not sponsoring a crowd strike, but I'm just giving example. In crowd strike, because EDR, I think majority of you will relate that, maybe central and one also. So in that, in central one, for example, they have a, they have two type of options and functionalities of that control which is available, but you are using that product by default. FAIR CAM can help you to understand and help you to figure out also that this product is having this level of capability. You are only using four capabilities of 10, 10 capabilities. That means you are not leveraging the platform up to its total strength. Third thing, reliability. Some tools usually do point in, point in time scan, sometimes some tools do real time scan, sometimes some tools do quarterly or maybe yearly. The frequency of the scan basically defines the reliability. If you multiply maturity, coverage, capa, sorry, if you multiply coverage, capability and reliability, you will come out, you will come up with an outcome which is known as the maturity of that control. So FAIR will help you at the end of the year, that out of my all controls, what are the top 10 failure controls which I expended the money, but it did not give me any ROI and now I need to remove those tool or either find a competitor to it or maybe save that budget. We did not got breached, that means it was of no use, maybe that use case was not there as per the logs by the SOC. So I will use that budget in spending somewhere else. So after one year, you will be having a great visibility on that, that is FAIR CAM. Second is FAIR MAM. Now the DPDP law is going to be implemented. In US, FAIR MAM is used extensively because SSE, the Security Exchange Commission, similarly to CERT, you know, they have a guideline that whenever there is a breach will happen, you have to tell us that, did you have the backup of every cost which you might have to pay? Did you predefine that? Did you, did you pre-prepare that cost or not? So for example, when there is a breach happen, you have to have a cost for forensics. There is a PR cost, there is a ransom recovery cost or maybe if you are paid the ransom, there is a cost involved into it. 199% companies, they never calculate these type of cost and they do not know that whether we have the appetite to, to take that impact or not. The FAIR MAM model, it's known as materiality analytical model. This model has 110 cost factors which are predefined. All those cost factors, you need to sit with your CFO, your legal team and ask them, if there is a breach, what will be our per hour cost for our lawyers? How much days a forensic team will take to do that? And then there is a cost which will come out of it, will be filled into these fields. Once you complete all these 110 fields, it's a workshop of almost 16 to 12 hours for, with respect to the availability of the individuals, but usually in our experience, we have seen it takes at least a month. But that's a one-time investment, first time you will be able to see that you are, you are almost close to the reality, that what is exactly the impact and what is the appetite I have to contain a breach, when after the breach, what will, the impact will be happening? The good part about it, after that, we have seen many, many companies, they have reduced the insurance coverages also. Because they thought they need 100 million dollar of insurance, but they never calculated the impact which can happen on their company. But once after they completed this exercise, that this is the worst and this is the best scenario and this number will always be in a range. There has to be a lower part of it and there will be a higher part of it. But at least you will know that 5 to 15 million dollar of risk I am sitting on. For that, you will not go for 250 million dollar of risk cyber insurance coverage, right? So this model is again, open source, you can download that, you can fill that and first time you will be able to see that for my organization, what exactly I am standing. The last model which they have recently implemented in RSA, that is known as third party analytical model. I'm sure all the big players, it's not a big problem for SMBs, but for bigger enterprises, banking and insurance or brokers, third party is a very big problem. There are number of players in third parties who are, you are paying them or maybe so on. So this is a free model, you can implement that model and you will be able to do the similar thing for, for the third parties, that which third parties are performing well, which are not. And if I have to recommend something to them to ensure that they will be safe, what is the best way of conveying those recommendations? Because the traditional ways are sending you maybe thousand things to fix on the third party and third party is not in your control. So what is the right way of doing that? How to rightly measure the third party risk? That is also freely available and freely, freely can be implemented. In US, almost 50% of 1,000 Fortune companies are using this, these models. With DSCI, we launched this model, we won the certification soon and again, we'll come to the certification also. But these are the three main models. If you have a good team, you can implement that, you need at least four to five people to do that. And once it's done, there is a different way of communicating with the board, regulatory bodies, which is far, far better than just showing them the typical...
Thank you Rahul and thank you to taking us through all these three analytical model, right? And why the discussion of risk needs to be more analytical in nature and FAIR Institute is a northpawed company like the DSCI is and that's why we tied up and partnered with FAIR Institute. For our sake of disclosure here, we are also launching a training program on the cyber risk quantification. I think in another one or two months, you'll see that training plan launched. This is a FAIR Institute and DSCI certification, training and certification program. And that would help you to get into detail and probably get yourself trained and capable enough to do such kind of activities for your organization. But coming to Gautamam, so this return of, usually call ROI, but in our context, we talk about is always a return on security investment basically, right? So are there some practical use cases that you can talk about, how this analytical competition has helped you to really optimize the investment going into security?
Great. Hey, there are a lot of solutions that we install or we will implement inside the organization. Not only solutions, be it any process, say for example, BCP, asset management or whatever he was calling EDR. Say for example, you take the same example of EDR, you get that EDR implemented inside your organization and how do you measure really whether this is performing to the extent what it's supposed to be, right? That is when the FAIR methodology comes in, in those three parameters, right? The coverage and the capability and reliability matters for you. In today's tradition, we are not so keen in doing it, right? Either you come back at the renewal stage and say that before the renewal stage, you say, this is performing or not, that's the measurement you'll be actually doing. But then if you implement actually this kind of methodology, this gives lot more insights on that. Not during the renewal stage, prior or even after quarter, if you want to really measure what is the, what is the performance of this, right? You will take the same example of EDR, whether it's kind of, from a capability perspective, if it's full 100%, then it should be protecting everything. If it is not, then you can easily measure it. Say for example, from the coverage as well, if you have got some thousand assets, then it's covered or not, you can easily measure it. By doing that and the reliability as well, you clearly identify whether this control is performing or not. If this control is performing or not, it translates equal to the vendor and then you can easily replace them the next renewal. That's something important.
I just want to add one point here, what Gautamam just added. From an return on security investment point of view, even before implementing FAIR in the organization, once you're finalizing controls also, that this year, I want to have 10 controls in my portfolio, but I am confused that which, which control will give me the best return on security investments. You can measure that mathematically also before implementing that tool also, that what is the return? And then you can show to your management, okay, if you are using DLP, this is, this will reduce 20 million dollar of risk. If you are using EDR, 50 million, now you choose based on this recommendation, that what you want to give me as a budget. So the conversation just changes, right? And return on security investments is before investing, I will be making sure that what will, what control will give me the best ROI of investments. And even if we, if we projected that, then after one year, we will be able to come again that will, is, is that tool were able to reach to that milestone which we, the reason why we bought it?
And I think the way the regulatory ecosystem is evolving and especially SEC, the Security Exchange Controller in US, right? So they brought this reporting of the cyber breaches, material breaches basically and in fact, learning from those experiences, SEBI also brought something similar, right? So we, you're not even talking about mortality, it's talking about every breach needs to be reported basically. And then that reporting of that breach leads to lot of challenges, right? And sometimes the reporting happens as a public disclosure as well. You need to do public disclosure and that's the, that's the expectation of regulator as well, right? And, and so anything you report on is public in nature, so could create a ramification, right? So there is a technical ramification and there is a reputational ramification as well actually, right? And that's why in some geography in SEC and now we see in Indian ecosystem as well, the things will be very seriously taken about the, your preparedness and also your response capability. And the MAM for that matter, which is like a materiality analytic model basically. So I'm not sure whether you foresee such kind of ramification because of the regulatory requirement coming in, in India ecosystem or not?
Is it for him?
Yeah, it's for him and yeah.
From a regulatory perspective, I think what we are seeing in US is going to get replicated over here because that's something which is important for us.
So last June, SEBI already had put this requirement, it's operational now.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So I think, see breach is, is a, see, if I ask you a fundamental question, why you're spending on security? Why you're spending too much money on, on cybersecurity? The only reason why you're spending it, others are just noise, is you don't want to be breached. Now is there a guarantee to for that? No. Still we are, it's like taking insurance, right? I don't know whether I'll die or not, but still I just want to have it to ensure that I'll be fine. Justifying a breach is a very big concern. India is a very good market of fraud with respect to incident response. I'm sure everyone will be agree to it. We can't, in, in the entire world, nobody is better than us with respect to incident response. We are very active in every field of our life, majority of us maybe. So, but proactiveness, proactiveness is something which was missing. No company today can, can, can calculate that, okay, if today there is a breach, what, what will happen? What will be the impact? There is no calculation of that. From a regulatory point of view, because they want to protect the national security for infrastructure, it can be a critical bank, right? If they know that if today a breach will happen, this bank is gonna lose this much of money or what will be the reputation damage and so on and so forth. Now from a country point, regulatory point of view, if they know that these are the organizations who are having a probability of breach this or this is the materiality cost which they have calculated and given to me, that if today breach will happen, this is what I am going to lose. Then the regulatory will be able to ensure that they will give the right help to them to ensure that they will not get that level of damage. Now that is something which is happening in US already. NS is active, CIA is active, FBI in terms of internal matters are active. So this is the first time that all the government, national security agencies are coming together and ensuring that what you will submit to me, that what is the materiality of your organization on the basis of your, what you have given to me, they will give you a recommendation which is very personalized in nature. So if you protect that amount of multiple companies from a regulatory body, your work is already done, right? Because technical point of view, they are already doing from a compliance way, they are already, they're getting the visibility, what you are doing and all. But from the second part, that is from a proactiveness, if they know that this, they will be able to project that what can be the national damage, it can happen in any case of these will be there.
So Rahul, last one or two minutes, so now there is a fair bit of understanding to establish here in terms of how the FAIR works and model works basically. So it is available in open source way and the standard basically, right? So if somebody has to start their journey, it's, one is, there are products available in market, somebody can build the product, they start up like that, somebody can consume internally basically, if you have to start with it basically. So both of you can reflect on this because you had already used it and Rahul, you have been providing some capabilities on top of it basically. So briefly, if somebody has to start, how do you start working on this?
So thanks for the question, I think it's a great question. So I think all of you are, might be ISO standard certified, you are the lead auditors, some people maybe like, I'm OICP, so I'm into hands-on little bit security when I started. So people are into cybersecurity team, some people are into MITR framework, so and so forth. Anyone who is looking to become a risk leader, again, I'm repeating, anyone who is looking to become a risk leader and under the category of risk management, this is the certification which you should do. From a risk management point of view, I'm, I'm sure I'm, I'm making a bold claim here, but from a risk management point of view, this is equivalent certification to CAA SSB. In US, you will see there are a lot of companies who have mentioned that, and this is for personal growth also. You cannot be way too technical when talking to the senior leadership. You have to talk in the language which they want to hear. So what is the right way of learning that language, calculating the risk, calculating the materiality? You can start a certification which is known as FAIR fundamentals, which is in association with DSCI. And the good part about, about is that... And the good part about is that DSCI members who are present in, they will get thirty percent discount on the certification. Our booth or the FAIR Institute booth is on the registration, nearby the registration desk. You can come there tomorrow, you just make sure that you need to show that you are a FAIR member and you will get thirty percent discount. Those who will not be able to do the certification also, you become a free member. Whenever there is a new model enhancement, new guideline, there are some guidelines, how to implement FAIR in your company, some kind of these kind of research papers, it will be available to you.
And somebody is really advanced in terms of understanding. They can also contribute for the next thing that-
Yes, absolutely. Because it's a open, it's a fifteen thousand member community globally, fifteen thousand member. And if you think that from a risk point of view, you have a better way of looking at the things, you can contribute also. And the good part is it's a cross-country collaboration. People like CISO of Meta, then CISO of Netflix, CISO of Dropbox, Roblox and Victoria's Secret. You name any big company, they're all are using it. You will be able to see what they are saying. And this is the best option to bring the risk awareness from the West to our country and where we can actually think little bit beyond the compliance, okay?
So Gauravam, I think as a CISO who already been using it, so how do, what is your word of advice and caution as well, if there are any, for somebody who is like to take it from the organization enterprise perspective?
Yeah, I'll not talk about the caution, but then I will say a few things about, which is very, very useful for me. If I want to measure my team's performance versus see XAs what they are trying to do it. Say for example, there is a vulnerability XAs, they have done it. If I want to do it, I have been, I was able to clearly visualize what they have done it and I was able to take it in front of a management team and I was able to get lot more resources as well. That is number one. And number two is, when we are working on cyber insurance, my CEO asked me a question, how have you arrived to this value, right? They have given five million, seven point five million, whatever it is, right? How can you derive to this value, right? That's when I actually triggered, it triggered me and then we are working on lot more methodology like FAIR, which gives me lot more comfort zone. Go on and talk in front of a cyber insurance company, say that I have got these many controls in place, then let me know why I should go and pay more, right? It gives really empowerment to CISOs. That is number one. That is number two, at least. From a perspective of implementation and caution, you have to be really understanding your pros and cons and bring the reality to the FAIR methodology, right? That will give you the real sense of where exactly you are standing right now. And then from there, you can take it forward to management, be very honest and blend with your management team and they should be able to support. After all, this is a data-driven methodology. We work on data-driven methodology as well as our organization. So believe-
Thank you, Gauravam, and thank you, Rahul.
Thank you.
Hope this was useful to understand what this discipline of risk quantification coming. Thank you, before I talked, for joining us, Rahul and Gauravam. And we look forward to many more conversation on this and we look forward to create a community of cyber risk quantifier in this country. And we look forward for your support and your participation in that. With this, I think you want to ask question?
It will be great to see also if you are able to publish, let's say, a loan loss distribution in terms of data which is specific to India. Primarily what you see from advisory and some of the other data sources, it's very US-specific or let's say Europe-specific. So even when you want to do a risk quantification in India for an Indian client, it's primarily-
Very important question because you need to have context. And we need to have Indian context to do those assessment and-
So I can answer that. I think as per my understanding with FAIR Institute, I think from last three months, as we launched the certification with the DSCI, I think the model is becoming at least two to three countries specific now. You will see, they will be taking Indian context into the picture.
It's not about the model itself, it's more about the loan loss distribution because I've had a career in market risk and then I moved into cyber. So you're talking about conditional war, you're talking about how do you apply market risk principles to cyber risk quantification, right? So specifically, the loan loss distribution for an India specific context also in terms of what you see from Indian market. I think it will be a great initiative with DSCI. If you are able to get that information, collate from the industry and share that or work out a model, whatever it is, we can probably work it out, but it will be a great thing for the industry.
Sure, sure. We are working towards on that and we shortly listen about announcement around that. But what we really want that when somebody is using this model, they should be able to have localized context as well behind that. And that's what we should be contributing to development of the next model. Thank you for those comment about this. So with this, let me probably close this session, then you can go on or off closing today's day. So thank you, both of you, Rahul and Gauravam. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we have a big round of applause? Well, I must say that we did save the best for the last. With that, I'd urge Mr. Venayak to please felicitate both our dignitaries with the token of appreciation. Can we please have the felicitations on stage? A round of applause one more time for that incredible conversation. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we come to an end of day one of FinSec 2024. And we would like to express our deepest gratitude for your presence and-